I'll call the May 24th Board of Commissioners work session to order at this time and thank you for being here. We recognize Sheriff Gary Gullidge, elected official here, and I don't see any others. Brian, if you'll bring the list forward, and if you have any devices that might ring, silence them please. Thank you. We're very, very pleased and privileged always to have Chaplain Joey Meeks in our presence, and he's going to bring us our invocation this morning and lead us in the pledge of the flag. Thank you, Joey. Stand if you're able.
Let's say our pledge. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all. All right, let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much, Father, for our county, but Father, we thank you so much for the people that make up our county, and I pray for our elected officials, Father. I pray God that you'd touch, I pray that you'd bless them. I pray God for all of our first responders, Father. I pray God that you'd keep them safe, Father. And it's my prayer, Father, that you build a hedge, Father, around our officials and all of our first responders, Father, and I pray God that you'd just help them today. I pray God that you'd help them make wise decisions, Father, and I pray that they'd always keep you first. We're so thankful for the Lord Jesus Christ and what he's done in our life, and just want to say thank you and we love you this morning, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks so much, Joey. The minutes from May the 8th, the work session minutes, and also the board meeting minutes are available for your review. We've had some big things going on around Paulding County, and our Positively Paulding focuses on one of those, so watch the screen and enjoy. (Music) Y'all really do got a friend in there, though. You've got a friend in me. You've got a friend in me. I got him too. There isn't anything I wouldn't do for you. Let's stick together and see them through, 'cause you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Some folks might be smarter than me, bigger than me. We love Caleb! Our friendship will never die. You're gonna see it's all destiny. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. You've got a friend in me. I got him too. There isn't anything I wouldn't do for you. Let's stick together and see them through, 'cause you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Some folks might be smarter than me, bigger than me. We love Caleb! Caleb! Our friendship will never die. You're gonna see it's all destiny. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Oh, you've got a friend in me. Here he is, your favorite, America's Next American Idol, Caleb Link-Hutchins. What's up, guys? I'm just hanging out with a couple friends. Baby, last night was hands down one of the best nights that I've had, no doubt. Between the bottle of wine and that look in your eyes and the farthing gate, and we danced in the dark under September stars and the pouring rain. And I know that I can't ever tell you enough that all I need in this life is your crazy love. If I never get to build my mansion in Georgia, got a sports car, rock the coast to California. Oh, if I'm all I got, your hand in my hand, baby, I could die a happy man. Oh, I could die a happy man. He didn't get first place, but he got a girlfriend, right? The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize the Paulding County Water System this morning. The whole staff are receiving the gold award from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals for complying with the 2017, for being in compliance during 2017 at the Copper Mine Pumpkin Vine and Upper Sweetwater Facilities. This award is given to facilities that achieve complete compliance with their NPDES and LAS permits. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals is a not-for-profit association whose purpose is to educate and assist those who have an interest in the proper management and protection of Georgia's water resources. GAWP recognizes exceptional performance in the delivery of safe, potable drinking water and the reclamation of wastewater. Our water system staff, many of them here this morning, took more than 16,000 measurements in 2017. This was to determine the compliance with the permits. A single permit violation disqualifies the facility for receiving this award. So achieving this level of compliance is no easy feat. It's a team effort and requires cooperation and communication between frontline operators, lab technicians, engineers, maintenance staff, and management, not to mention the essential role of elected leaders in providing the resources to allow the staff to do its job. So, the Board of Commissioners is so very proud of our staff for reaching this impressive level of achievement. This is an important accomplishment and speaks volumes about the exceptional commitment and level of service that the Paulding County Water System provides their customers. So, I've got four gold awards here that I want to just hand over to Laurie and let her bring her team up and say anything that she would like to say, and then I guess we'll get our customary group picture. Copper Mine, Pumpkin Vine, Pumpkin Vine WRF, and the Upper Sweetwater, all four.
We've got Mark, Mark Piler from our Pumpkin Vine facility. We've got John here from our, John is with our Copper Mine facility. Greg and Brandon with our Upper Sweetwater facility. And Tim Pugh is with our, is our laboratory manager. And without that team effort, this isn't possible. This is our second year on a number of these, and we continue to strive for that perfect level of compliance. And this is one of those tasks that is never-ending. These facilities run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and, and so, and require the attention of an operator on each of those days. So, we'd like to present those to two for Pumpkin Vine, Copper Mine, and Upper Sweetwater.
but the two permits, that's another exciting accomplishment.
We have received, in the last week, we received our water withdrawal permits, another important milestone toward the operation of Richland Creek Reservoir and the water plant. It's two permits because we have, we have a permit to withdraw from the Etowah River to fill Richland Creek Reservoir, and then one to withdraw from the reservoir for the plant for distribution, for treatment and distribution to our customer base. I was looking back, and I think this was applied for in 2012 or 13, so it's been a long time coming.
That's great. Very good news. Thank you so much, Laurie. When you sent the email, that was exciting. Exciting times.
Something that's not under announcements, and it was really covered in April, our April 24th meeting, and I don't see Robert Cabrera in the audience, but we recognize the Keep Paulding Beautiful Board and all the volunteers that, that helped. And then they had a cleanup day, so that's probably why, at the last meeting, it was 10 years since we'd have, had a lower number in our litter index. And I couldn't just let this go by, but, so, the, the number, and I'm not going to go into how it's calculated, but in April was 1.4075, and that was the first time it had gone down in 10 years. Now, just in one month, it's gone down another tenth of a point. So, I think that's worth recognizing and appreciate, again, all the volunteers that came out for that cleanup day.
I'd like to say just thank you to everybody, because that was a, I mean, 10 years, it's the first time it's gone down, but it's a group effort, and it's taken everything that we've done. Citizens, volunteer groups, school groups, organizations, and we, we think litter's not that big a deal, but it is a big deal when folks are driving down the road and they see it. I'm in the real estate business, and that's one of the things that we get complaints of when you have people that are moving here. And so, I just would like to thank everybody's effort for that. But I really also like to thank the citizens, the taxpayers, and the Board of Commissioners, because we put a lot of, a lot more effort into paying for litter pickup and extra mowings and pickup on the sides of the roads, and that effort is really something that we've done, we've really focused on, I know, the last six, seven years, but the last, last couple, three years, Scott and George, we've, we've worked hard on that. And those guys are doing a great job, but I, I just appreciate all the efforts. I've always said it's not just one thing that can fix it. It takes us all. So, good news, good report, and I, I appreciate everybody's help.
We were talking just before 10 o'clock regarding celebrating Memorial Day, and of course, encourage everybody to, to find a location to do that, and I don't, perhaps somebody would have an announcement where there's going to be a celebration or a memorial Under invited guests, we have Ms. Rita Norris with the CareLink update. Ms. Norris, thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, yes. My name's Rita Norris, and I am the current chairperson of the CareLink of Northwest Georgia, Inc. And I wanted to come and give you a little bit of an update on CareLink. I think it's been about two years, year and a half, two years since Guy Skoll, who's the president of our corporation, came to talk about CareLink. And it seems like a short time, and yet it's been a long time as well. I'd like to talk just briefly what we are. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was created and incorporated in January of 2016. Our purpose at this point in time is to provide a limited medical facility to the uninsured and the underinsured residents of Paulding County. Now, according to the 2018 county health rankings, 16% of our residents between the age of 18 and 64 have no insurance. That equates roughly to 15,600 people. Underinsured are people who have lost their insurance or never had insurance that have used the Managed Care Act to get it, through the exchange, insurance. In the past few years, opportunities to choose has gone down, and your premiums and your deductibles have gone up. And so, for many people here in the county, their alternatives when they are sick is either to go to work sick and provide the wealth to everybody else that they work with, to stay home sick and run the risk of not being paid or losing their job. And then, the hardest part is if they decide that they're going to tough it out, they end up in an emergency room where they have to sit for hours waiting to be taken care of. None of those are particularly good options for our residents. So, what we are offering and bringing to Paulding County is going to be a limited medical facility initially at 625 West Memorial Drive, which is right up by CNC Pharmacy, or as many longtime residents of the county like to say, Dr. Smith's old medical building. And where we're at on that, on September 20th of this past year, we entered into a letter of intent with WellStar. WellStar owns the building, and part of that letter of intent was that they would provide us the building with a very, for a very nominal lease, 25-year lease with the option of giving the building to us after five years. They also asked us to show skin in the game by raising $50,000. And if, once we met that $50,000, they will match it with a $50,000, $50,000 seed money. Additionally, they're providing the medical, medical doctors. We have a new board of member that is head of the residency program for Kennistone. And those physicians that he has control over will be our physicians on Tuesdays. And when I say we're going to be open unlimited, we anticipate being open initially on Tuesdays and, and Saturday mornings. We want to be open when people would not necessarily be at work. So, again, an alternative to the emergency rooms. We met our $50,000 match on March 30th. And it was a, providing of monies that came from the community, from the board of directors, from a lot of the utility companies that serve us, Paulding County. And we're very, very excited about that. We also are going to have provided to us by WellStar for those who meet the 2018 poverty guidelines, lab work, x-rays, and some medicines. We're a primary care physician process. We are not going to be focusing on children. Again, our focus is going to be that 18 to 64-year-old group that, that doesn't have the insurance that they need. We're not going to be everything to anybody, everybody. We can't do that when you're first starting out. So, we are going to primarily be working on six common illnesses that address many of the Paulding County residents. Type 2 diabetes, COPD, cardiovascular problems, type, obesity, there's probably a couple more, and I'm just not coming up with it right this moment. We sent the final definitive agreements and the lease agreements to WellStar for sign-off on April the 26th. And now, we wait. Now, waiting's not my strong suit, and I have had to come to the realization that my timelines and God's timelines are just not the same. I wish they were, but they certainly are not. And we got an update yesterday from WellStar that they are slowly winding their way through the executive management of WellStar Medical Group as well as the compliance group. And honestly, when I heard that it had to go to compliance, having been in banking for a number of years, I just groaned, because I figured that I could get through the executive group faster than I could probably get through the compliance group, but that, that too shall come. Where we're at, once we get the signatures, we will, we have RK Ready Construction Company, which many of you may know through Bremen, Georgia, have been good enough to tell us that they will be our general contractor. All we're going to have to pay for is the supplies that come with it. Then, standing in line at the chamber, wonderful place to meet people, I talked to the guy behind me, come to find out he's with TNR Fixtures, who made Industry of the Year. And he says, "Well, if RK Ready will do that," he says, "We'll do the same thing." So, they're doing our mailwork for us. And on it has gone. Every time we've turned around, good people in the county have stepped forward and said, "We will help you make this a reality." And so, our goal is within 90 days of having the signatures, is to have this limited facility open. Now, is that going to be 90 days now? August? Is it going to be September? Will they be coming back and waving at you in January and say, "Well, would you believe for my Christmas present this year?" So, I don't know. I don't know what that 90 days means. So, that's basically where we're at right now. We were recognized by the 2018 House of Representatives with a proclamation, which we were very pleased to have sponsored by Howard Maxwell. And when we get open, I'm going to come and ask you all to do the same thing for us, if you may. We would like to be recognized and given support by the county commissioners as well as the residents. Our most pressing needs, get the agreement signed. That's, that's first and foremost. Second need is we really need a medical director. And when I say we need a medical director, when I was talking to Guy yesterday, he goes, "Well, why are you going to mention that in the, this meeting?" And I said, "Well, you never know who knows who." But, you know, we need a volunteer medical director to help us set the inside of the clinic up. You know, I can drive numbers and drive tasks, but I can't tell you where to put the table, and I can't tell you where to put the blood pressure machines, you know? I need a medical director to help set up the inside and to help us with the processes and procedures. And oh, by the way, if that's not difficult enough, they usually have three jobs that they're already working as a physician. This is a volunteer position we're asking them to do, because all of us have been volunteers. We're 100% volunteer at this point, will continue to be so in the next three to six months. So, we're asking them to volunteer our services for their first three to six months before we can pay for them. We need volunteer help. You know, the county, everybody I talked to says, "That's a great idea. You know, we really need it. Well, step forward. We need your help." And we needed to help, you know, clean the building. We're going to need to help paint the building. We're going to need to help, you know, have administrative help. So, we're looking for volunteers that want to support and be something important to the residents of the county. And in closing, I always have to have an ask, and that is, since we're going to be a very poor and are a very poor nonprofit, we would love to have you waive your property taxes on that building when we get the lease. Last year, they were $1,700. We would like it very much if you would waive the fee, the property tax fees for us. That's one last thing that we have to pay for, and that money can go for treating our patients. So, I'll close. I just would like to say thank you for having me. I appreciate it very much. And I'll add, I'm happy, if you have a moment or two, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you so much for being here. This has been one of the most exciting things that I've seen. It's taken five or six years to develop, and you and Guy Skoll have, you know, been right at the front. I think it would be interesting to the audience, the different stakeholders. I used to go to all the meetings, and somehow I ran out of time. There's been people throughout the community.
We do. We have a wonderful cross-section of the community. And actually, to your point, David, we started with a concept, probably through family connections and even before that. Emily Blitzer, I think is her last name? I, I may have it wrong. 2012, 2014 was when this started to be talked about, you know? And Guy beat a path here to the county from 2014 to current, selling the concept. He's our visionary of the process. But stakeholders, Howard Maxwell's been there, Linda Versharon's been there, Mike Mason was there. We've had...
We've had law enforcement.
Law enforcement. We've had the Sheriff's Department. We've had WellStar people there. Truly a cross-section. We continue to look for people who want to be part of something exciting, to be part of the board. Difference, we would say, with the board, from concept to implementation, is there got to be workers? Yet, we, we, we don't have the luxury right now of having people who give oversight and direction. We need to have people that know how to roll up the sleeves and, and actually wield a paintbrush or a broom. So, wonderful people in the community, and we've been very appreciative of your support.
Just one other thing. How about other counties? Are, are we going to be fairly distinctive in, in this? I've probably been told this before, but it goes back so far.
We, we initially wanted to be a regional medical facility, and part of the discussion with WellStar was they asked us to focus purely 100% on Paulding County residents for at least the first six months to a year. Other counties, Bartow, Floyd, Cobb, Dappusville, all have community clinics. We will be the first nonprofit community clinic here in the county. And so, we are going to be unique in that. We are not the first urgent care. We're not the first primary care, but we are going to be the first nonprofit. Any other questions?
Just appreciate you being here. Thanks for the update.
I thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under bid awards, discuss action to award the materials testing and inspection services for the Paulding County Adult Detention Center, Law Enforcement Center, to NOVA Engineering in the amount of $125,395. Ms. Pollard.
Good morning. Sorry, good morning.
Good morning.
On April the 12th, we received these bids for the materials testing and inspection. We relied heavily on comprehensive program services to assist us in this review. They rated the proposals on staffing, experience, and performance approach, availability, financial stability, and cost. NOVA Engineering scored the highest, and we've done work with NOVA before. They're currently doing some work for us on the site. And the scope of this work will include the testing and inspection services for soils, stormwater monitoring, fittings and foundations, asphalt, concrete, concrete, masonry, steel, welds, seismic roofing installation inspection, and fabrication shop inspections. And Eric's here if you have any questions.
He's going to be up in a few minutes also, right?
He is. He is, and I imagine he'll touch on this again.
Okay. When he comes back up.
Okay. Under bid award number two, discuss action to award the purchase of the ladder truck to EONE in the amount of 550, I'm sorry, $859,364. Ms. Pollard and your backup there.
That's right. That's right. We have a truck that's going out of service and is scheduled to go out of service in December, so we were required to replace that truck. We issued RFP, received those. Two of the trucks were sold out from under us before we could get this process completed. And so, now we have a hundred, 100-foot ladder truck in the amount of $859,364. And I believe we've gone to see the truck, and Joey can elaborate a little more.
Thank you. We, we have seen the truck. It's, it's an E1, and it's standardized with the E1 that we have now at Station 2 that we got in the grant, and we did have a chance... have a chance to look at it. It's got a better turning radius, a single axle. They can get into some of these subdivisions and all. The good thing about it, we did look at both trucks, an HME, which was an eighty-foot truck. It was cheaper, but we had a committee evaluation came together and did some grading on it, and the E one came out on top. It actually was a nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar truck. But after we picked it, they were going to do some modifications that we didn't need them to do, and, and took some of the equipment off. So we got the price down to the eight fifty-nine. And we went through the fleet manager. He's signed off on it, and he's, he's happy with the unit as well.
You've got SPOSS dollars for that?
We're going to use, okay, we're going to use the fire tax money, and it will be reimbursed with the SPOSS funds at a later date. But yes, it will be SPOSS funds. Correct?
Did you... I was going to kind of switch the subject. That big American flag, it was on our newer hundred-foot boom truck?
Yes, we did. We, we did that for the American Island City Dallas call. And we did that for them. That was our big hundred-foot platform truck.
This went before the Fire Tax Advisory Board?
Yes, it did. And they, they approved it before we purchased it. And this, this truck, the one we currently have is a two thousand and seventy-five foot truck. And FEMA's requiring us to, with the grant that we received for the platform, FEMA's requiring us to retire that truck. We have to, by law, to retire that truck by December thirty-first. And one of the decisions we made with the E one was, we can get this truck in thirty to forty-five days versus the other one we looked at, it's going to be two hundred and ten days or so. And usually, they run later than that. So we would have been without a ladder truck as well. That was in our decision as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a small change on here, because I think we need to reword the item. It's Fireline Inc. is the name of the vendor. E one is the name of the truck. The E one hundred is the truck. So we'll reword that a little bit for tonight.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no reports this morning from committees and departments. No sign-ups for the public participation. Under the consent agenda, we have three. Number one is adopt resolution eighteen dash twenty-five, extending the moratorium for the, on additional thirty days on the acceptance of applications for the PRD, the Planned Residential Development Zoning Category. Number two is to appoint Phyllis Hennessy to the Paulding County Library Board of Trustees with a term beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And number three is to appoint Mr. Robert Banks to the Keep Paulding Beautiful Board with a term ending June the first, two thousand and twenty-one. Would any of the post-commissioners like to move any of those three items to regular business? Let's proceed then to old business. Number one, discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash twenty-four, confirming executive session for the purposes of personnel from the May eighth, two thousand and eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
Gentlemen, this is under old business because you held the meeting after the two o'clock at the last meeting. So we did one in the morning, which you already had a resolution for, and then you did one at two o'clock. So this one is for last meeting's two o'clock executive session.
Thank you for keeping us straight. So, under new business, discuss action to approve the guaranteed maximum price contract with Turner Construction to construct the new adult detention facility and law enforcement center in the amount of sixty million, one hundred thousand dollars. And we're so glad to have Mr. Eric Johnson here, who's... Good morning.
I ain't the fire chief, but I always wanted to be. They wanted me to beat on this a little bit, start with, if y'all don't mind. Of course, I'd be remiss, and I know I'm going to miss somebody, but start off by thanking the public for approving this bond referendum, so that we can get this thing built. It's, we've had a dire need for it for quite some time. Also, I'd like to thank each of y'all commissioners, because I know I drove y'all crazy with it. This is a lot, probably one of the largest undertakings that I've ever been involved with. I built a couple of houses. I said, "It shouldn't be no big deal." And I found out real quick, this ain't no house. It's drove me crazy. A lot of people's put a lot of time into this. Colonel Hunt's in the room. My retired Colonel Jim Walker's in the room. Eric Johnson, we made him hire the chief deputy that was with Douglas County that built, that was a big part of building near jails. He works for CPS. He's given us a lot of information and what we should do, what we shouldn't do. Of course, nobody in this county can do anything without Tabitha. My aunt's always off to her. I don't know how she does it. Frank's always helping us. Our engineer, Bruce Coyle, and I could go on and on, but there's so many people. Scott Green, when he come on board this new job, he's climbing in the middle of this thing with both feet. I'm almost ashamed to say this, since he ain't from here, but he's a little bit smarter than I am. He can sit down with paperwork and make it, and it makes sense to him, and it didn't to me. But thank each of y'all for your time, but mostly thank the public for what they've done. The assistant, the existing facility that we're in is twenty-eight years old now. It's, originally was built as a two-hundred-bed facility, and we didn't expand the building, but we put more beds in it, and we got it up to three hundred. We have wore the building out. We have a bad problem with the design. Everybody that came out and has looked at this building is amazed that we've made it as long as we have, and we've stayed out of federal court with what we've had to do inside this building. A lot of people don't understand is, we have a problem with, if Tony can't get along with Ron, we must forever keep Tony and Ron separated. Well, that's fine, until you don't have a place to keep them separated. But we don't have a choice about it. We're required to do it. So we have to put Tony on one side of the, the building, and Ron on the other side of the building, and nothing that they do during their day can ever come together. So there's a lot more to this than, we want a bigger, nicer building because we, we just need it. These people cannot be together. If they do, and we allow that to happen, we fall into lawyers make money. Sorry, Lonny. And we lose money.
This whole speech has been...
Yeah. But also, at the sheriff's office, in the front of this building, if you, if you looked at the building in the back of this picture, the right side in the front will be the sheriff's office. We're trying to get everything under one roof. Right now, we're in numerous buildings. If you come by the office, we're in trailers, we're in mobile homes, we're in, anywhere we can get, we put people in a closet, whatever, whatever it takes to get the job done. But it, it'll be real nice to put everything back under one roof so that, and it'll be easier for the public to deal with. Also, the jail should, will have a corridor that goes from the jail into the courthouse. That way, inmates will never go outside. They can be transported from jail to court and back without ever being endangered to the public. And it's also safer and cheaper for us to do it than just to load them in cars and haul them all over the place, back and forth. The new building's going to have four hundred and eighty beds for the general population. So we'll go up from where we're at now to three hundred to four eighty. We'll also have a place for our inmate workforce. They'll be separated from everything, so that as they go outside and come back into jail, they can't get with the prisoners that stays inside the jail. We call it contraband, so that everybody know what it is. They can't bring stuff inside. It's not supposed to be there. Also, every jail in the state is having an issue with mental health. The state has shut down mental health care facilities, and a lot of these people are winding up in the county jails, and we're no, we're not exempt from that. We have a huge problem with that. I see it getting a lot worse, not better. We're not set up to deal with it. But the public don't care, and the state don't seem to care. And everything seems to, if, if you have a problem and nobody's there to fix it, it seems to fall under my fault. So, and this is the same way. So this new facility will be set up in the same way that our jail, we have a, our medical facility is woefully too small. I mean, basically, it's a room, and that's it. And the time is coming. It needs to be fixed. So in this one, we'll have fifty-five beds. It'll be for mental health and medical, and also room for the doctors and the dentists and everybody to come in and do what they need to do. And also, with, with the jail comes bad guys. And some of these people can't behave, or they wouldn't be there. But some of them can't even behave when they're in the behavior center. So we have to keep them separated. So we'll have, we'll have a special place for the people that don't want to follow the rules or get along, or they want to hurt staff, or we'll, we'll have a special place where we can deal with them. I, I'm, I'm looking forward to get this thing started. I know it's been a, Lord, it's been a dragin' out to get it done. Everybody seems to be, and I'm included, kind of scared to kick the ball off and get it off the tee to start with. The problem with it is, is, and we all know, because a lot of us are in the construction field, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. We started talking about this probably when I first got elected sheriff, and the price just keeps skyrocketing. And this is not a, a lot of it is, I know we need it, but we also got Georgia Sheriff's Association to come in and do a need study for us. So they look at the facility we got. They look at the county. They look at the future population and the growth. And they recommended that we build one bigger than what we're trying to build. So I want to make sure that the public trust us with seventy-seven million dollars, and I was pretty sure we could do it for that. And I want to stay well below that, if at all possible. Some people's going to have some issues toward the end with the, what's the right word, aesthetics with the way it looks. The front of the building, it's going to be visible, of course. It's got brick on it. Scott Green's been working with us greatly to make this concrete part of the building, putting lines in it, putting different things in it to make it look better. As we get toward the end, if it becomes a problem, I'm hoping we'll have enough money left. If we need to go in and add some pretty to it, if we need to put lipstick on the pig, we'll say, we'll have money to buy the lipstick with. But, but I also don't want to do, Eric Johnson was involved in building the jail in Abraham County, and I'm not going to throw him under the bus, but their commissioner says, "Do not spend one penny on making this building look good." And when they got done with it, they come and looked at it and said, "This is the ugliest building I've ever seen." He said, "Well, thank you." So, we don't want to go that far, but we also don't want to, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to have, you know, staples and diamond roofing and all kinds of stuff like that. So I think the public trusts me in what I'm doing. I told y'all before, I think as long as we put it out to them, I put this thing out on the stage and shined a spotlight on it. I didn't do anything without the public's intervene, intervention in it. Because like y'all, I'm answering for the public. So everything I do, they're going to be looking at me and holding my feet in the fire. I'll get Eric Johnson to come up, and I think I'll probably beat everything I need to beat. You got anything to add? Also, if Eric messes up, we've already dug his grave. So, so we've got him ready. But a little bit on Eric. I talked to sheriffs around the state. Eric's been involved in building a lot of jails around here. I've talked with five different sheriffs. Most all of them says, "Hire, hire the little fellow and get him to come over here, and he'll help you do it, and he'll do a good job." So that's how we got involved in this. Of course, we've, we've gone through, I know Todd was on the committee, Tony was on the committee, all these people come in and bid on these jobs. Nobody that's doing this was hand-selected by me. Everybody come in and put in for the committee. Each of y'all that's on the committee know that I didn't come tell you, "Hey, we need this, or we need that." I stayed away from it for, for a reason. I didn't want to be involved in that part of it. The committee chose the people that's from the, from CPS to Turner Construction that's going to do the building. And I kept my foot out of it, and my mouth out of it. So I'll introduce you to Eric Johnson with CPS, and let him beat you to death.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning.
He was talking about Carroll County, if y'all don't know that job. Plus, I've got graves at Cobb County, Douglas County. They haven't buried me yet. It's the same threat with every sheriff and commission. But good morning. It's, it is an exciting day. The sheriff's office has been great. The commission's been fabulous. Tabitha, again, has been great. Bruce Coyle's been with us the whole time. Scott's come in here and, and retired chief, Jim Walker, and Colonel Hunt. It's been a big team effort. In addition to that, I think we have Karen Sickner and Steve DeFilippi with Wakefield Beasley are here. And we have Tim Collins and Lance Painter from Turner. And I'll let you beat up on Tim here in a second. So it is an exciting day. As you see the sketch right there, it's, we, we think it's going to look very, very nice. One thing, before we get into it, the sheriff did bring up the housing, which is on the left. We've been working with the county, Scott Green and Tabitha, with the city. And we're looking at reveals. We'll get into it a little bit more. But fortunately, the local contractor who's going to be doing that is Metromont. We have a great relationship with them, and they've been great. We've got a lot of data from them before we go to contract with Metromont, which will be soon to start shop drawings. Urgency on this is, we'll have commitments on what we want that elevation to look like. Hopefully, we'll have that developed before, long before those panels go up. So with that, we'll, to start at the budget. And as I reported the last time I was here, our baseline, we've talked about the data out there with respect to, to construction costs. What we've always said was that bottom line of the sixty-nine point six, Gary, the sheriff referred to the seventy-seven million. We've always referred to this jail program total would not exceed sixty-nine point six. And we are here to say, we feel very comfortable with that still today. Having said that, you will see that the GMP that we had budgeted, and slides are a little bit further down, we budgeted in May of two thousand and seventeen. A lot's happened since then, even up to that point. But we have worked very closely with Wakefield Beasley, the sheriff's office, and Turner. And Tim didn't want me to say this, but I will say it. This jail is coming in at around two hundred and forty dollars per square foot. Any other jail around is going over three hundred dollars a square foot. I don't want to give any accolades to Turner yet, because we're still dealing with a lot of touchy things. But they've done a super job. And they'll, they'll have a chance to talk about the local participation as well. So, the GMP, we're at sixty million, one hundred thousand. The actual, it was fifty-eight million, what we always set up. It's at fifty-nine million, five hundred thousand dollars. How we got to that, as we mentioned before, we took a half a million dollars out of the testing budget of seven fifty. It is still at two fifty. You'll be approving a contract for Nova for a hundred and twenty-five. There's still a little more than that. So there's a little less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left in that testing budget. There's other things that we'll probably need to do, so we'd like to just kind of keep a cushion in there. But again, it's all the county's money. What doesn't get used stays with the county. It's just clearly a budget item. What we also did was, we went and reduced the owner contingency from two and a half to one and a half million. And we did a half million before, and I will tell you, we have really, really mitigated a lot of risk you typically don't get at this point in a GMP. Those drawings, Turner's GMP, although it's not reflected in the contract yet on a hundred percent documents, they've had them and been working with them. This GMP is based on a seventy-five percent GMP drawing package, but really, a lot of the pricing is in for the hundred percent drawings. We'll come back to you for one more contract amendment, which, in our opinion, will be a zero change order to the project, which will actually change order in the hundred percent documents. So this GMP is based on seventy-five percent construction documents. Okay? So there'll be one more. It'll be a zero percent, zero dollar change, and no more time. It'll clearly just be moving documents into the GMP contract. So with that, that's how we came up with the GMP now of fifty-nine point five. In doing some of this stuff, we worked with the county Scott Green and Bruce Coyle, and have an east and west corridor roads that we were talking about doing, which helps in a number of different ways from the county flow of the, of this whole facility. We have a budget line item there that you see of six hundred thousand dollars called the Paulding County Other Capital Improvements, that we are also adding into the fifty-nine point five million dollars, which brings their total GMP to sixty million, one hundred thousand dollars. So, with that, and then that, I guess that increases the total project budget from sixty-nine point six to seventy point two. So. Again, we came on board May of two thousand and seventeen through a competitive process. Wakefield Beasley came on board a month later, same competitive process. Turner as well in August. Again, we'll be approving the Nova's material testing. And real quick, those testing requirements are straight out of the special inspections portion of Wakefield Beasley's specifications. And it all deals with international building codes, so all of that stuff gets taken care of by Nova. So we've been working together since last August on this project. Again, we'll be asking for approval. Again, comprehensive program services, Wakefield Beasley, working with the county staff, the sheriff's office. And I think we're all in agreement that this is the right number. So. Local participation, currently, we're at twenty point two-six where we were before. We think that number is going to increase. As we've mentioned before, I think, in my opinion, I've done this a lot with Turner, too. I think they've done as much or exceeded... I think they've done as much or exceeded what, what we did at Douglas County. In Douglas County, we were, I think, our final number was thirty point three percent local participation. So, I think, I know Turner has, uh, the whole team has gone beyond what we did at, at Douglas. And this is where we are today, we're still shooting for twenty-five percent. Um, so, uh, Tim is here to address any of the local participation programs out there. I mean, the chamber has been heavily involved with us, and I think we've had, anytime anybody has called me, I've gotten them in touch with Turner. So we hope that, uh, at least everybody who's wanted to has either gotten a phone call back or has been involved in the process at some level, so. Um, milestones, uh, approval today. We are also meeting, uh, today to try to have what we call a stamp party. We're hopefully gonna get the land disturbance permit today. Um, construction start tomorrow. Sorry. Uh, you're not gonna see excavators start, uh, pulling up out there. There's a lot of things we gotta get with, uh, EPD, erosion control, get all of that stuff. But that will kick off, what that means is a lot of these long lead items, um, the structural precast. A, a lot of these long, uh, the list goes on, HVAC, plumbing, a lot of these, uh, metal cells, electronic security. A lot of the things that are dependent or very critically cost-dependent will be released, um, probably, they may be even watching right now. Uh, hopefully this gets approved, so those are the things that'll happen. Uh, we still expect to have substantial completion, October, November, I say that due to weather, uh, but we're showing October twenty-fourth. Our schedule CPS is that we have always been tracking. Um, we review monthly with Turner and their lines, you know, within a week or two apart from one another. But all in all, I think we're, uh, in line with the schedule. Uh, and final completion, that's, you know, twelve-thirty, uh, end of two thousand nineteen. Uh, and all the training and all that will have, uh, been accomplished by then as well, so. That is the front facade. Uh, over to the left is, um, the area that we may work on, that we are working on, uh, from aesthetic standpoint. I think those panels are probably twenty-four, twenty-five feet tall, maybe thirty at the eaves. Uh, but we realize that, uh, we've already taken some, there is some money inside this GMP to deal with it. Uh, and those are reveals inside the precast that will be handled by Metromont, uh, we'll also explore. Uh, we met this morning, um, we'll explore others, inlay brick, uh, see what the costing is and, and get it back to you all, um, so. Again, pauldingjail.com, uh, if you have any, we update that occasionally. Um, if anybody wants to know where things are or how to get in touch with us, they can certainly go on that website, so. It's a lot of information, um, we'll open it up for questions.
Well, Eric, excuse me, I'd like to thank you. I appreciate what you did this morning for me, helping out. Last Thursday, I meet with Frank Baker at twelve o'clock and he gives me this book and says, hey, read this, uh, we're gonna vote on it Tuesday. I said, Frank, I'm kinda busy. So, uh, I did, yeah, that book. So I did look it over a little bit on Friday and, um, yesterday I really had to get into it. And then the early this morning, made some phone calls and came up here this morning to talk to Tabitha, had some concerns. Most of my concerns were the things that the sheriff had agreed to take out. And I think you guys addressed that and I appreciate it, Tim. And Scott, you answered a lot of questions, I appreciate that. And also Colonel Hutton, I'm glad you were in that meeting this morning so that I could hear from you, it was okay wherever you are. Is he still in here? There he is. Thanks, appreciate it. We did talk and I, Tim, I appreciate you being there and if, you know, we talked about saying a few things to the public, cause I was concerned about some of the cameras being taken out, intercoms and stuff, and we've addressed that and assured that it's not affecting the security of the jail. And also, um, the facade, I wanted to address, and Scott, I appreciate you working with that and making sure that it's, uh, we're working with the city of Dallas, and they'll be, uh, okay with what we do too. And hopefully they'll, they'll be okay with what we wanna do.
Yes, sir.
So, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think, uh, the last few weeks, a lot of my questions have been answered. Scott and I have talked a little bit, so the, uh, neighboring county that has the jail that doesn't look too good. I'm, I'm gonna say this out loud, ours cannot look like that. On en, any side. Um, and so, one of my concerns is, and I wanna, I wanna make note of it today, and, and I know we're addressing it. I know we've talked about it, I know we're working on it. And I know it's still, we've still got a little ways to go. We purchased the property out back and, um, in the long run, that's gonna save us a lot of money. What I don't want to happen is I, I, and this is just for me, and this is just one commissioner. I do not want us to waste the dirt. I wanna say it out loud. I don't wanna waste dirt, I don't wanna spread it down the hill, and I don't wanna kill the trees. So I'm, I'm saying it now because I don't want it to happen later and then all of a sudden, we have a, we have a problem. Um, we have places that that dirt can go. In the county, for ourselves. And if not, we have, um, folks out there that are doing projects that would be glad to have the dirt, and we'll have to truck it to them. Some of those folks would probably be glad to participate in that trucking, buying it, whatever we gotta do. But at the end of the day, I, I wanna make sure, my, my request is that when we go out, our new road in the back, and when we round the backside of the campus, that that building looks good. And that, um, that we're proud of it from the front, all sides. And that we, I don't want, I don't wanna have anything that's a, um, oh, we're gonna clear it and we're gonna do this and then we're gonna plant it. We've got some beautiful sites back there. I want us to protect those. And, um, because there's other things we can use that property for. And, and I think we have to realize that, Scott, that if we waste the dirt, it takes away some of the use of that property that we have in the future. And so, my hope is that we will do whatever we need to do, that we're not wasting the dirt, we're not getting rid of the trees, and that helps protect the beauty of the backside of, of that facility. And I know we've talked about it. I just don't wanna be one of those where somebody says, well, you didn't say anything. And so, um, I think it's gonna, we have a beautiful campus here, we've spent money out front on the Veterans Park. There's other things that I would like to see upgraded in, in our campus. This place is gonna be here for a long time. And at the end of the day, uh, it needs to be a facility that everybody that comes to is very proud of everything that we have here. And, uh, when you look at the park and you look at these two buildings and you look at what we're putting back there, biggest, biggest, uh, facility, biggest piece of ground as far as money that we have in the county, so. You know what I mean, and we, and it's been talked about. I just wanna beat it to death. I wanna make sure that we're good at the end of the day. And I wanna make sure that we've got some beautiful sights back there, that home place. I wanna make sure that we do what we need to do, Scott, George, to make sure we're good. And I, and I know you don't have, you know what I'm saying. But, but if we need to work together as a county and bring departments in to do anything to help facilitate that, I'm looking past Tabitha and onto the back there. If whatever we need to do to pitch in to make sure that it, at the end of the project, we're in great shape and we're really proud of that, that's, I wanna make sure you guys are willing to come to us, ask us, don't think, hey, we don't have anything else, so we're just gonna look like the neighboring county back there. All right. And I do appreciate all the work that everybody's put in. And, um, I know we're down in, in the public sees today and then, you know, construction tomorrow. But there's been a lot of work to get us to this point to today, and I think we're, we're, we're good and prepared.
Thank you. Um, great point on the site behind. We have already, um, come up with a different, Scott's been very, um, uh, forward-thinking on the dirt issue. Uh, I think we've come up with some pretty good plans on how to, um, deal with the dirt other than cutting down trees. I know we already have a concept of the half acre between the West Road and DDS on how to save the trees. Uh, and we're also looking, we're also working on a plan for the, I think it's two acres, Scott, is it not? Right behi, on the north side of the West Road as well on, and I know, um, dealing with the dirt, and I, I can't believe the sheriff's not up here saying, I've got a hole, I, I, I dug a hole for him out there at the training center I gotta fill up. I've been meaning to fill that thing up for about four years now. Uh, when we ran into rock out there when we did the training center, we needed to steal, we needed to bring everything up, if y'all remember that. So there's a hole out there, um, by crow flight, less than a mile, probably. So, uh, answer your question, yes, sir. Uh, we have, uh, thought about it, we're dealing with it. We have one half of that kinda, um, under a concept design and ways of how we can deal with the dirt, if we don't waste it on that site particularly, so.
Yeah, and I'll add to it, this morning, Commissioner Poundell, Scott made it very clear that it's already two out of five commissioners that talked to him, and he made sure they understood that. I think you guys understood it, and I said, uh, one of those two's not me, and he said, no, okay, now there's three out of five. And I'm sure the other two would agree too.
Uh, suffice it to say, that's, that's the, no pun intended, that's the road we're, we're traveling down, so. We hear you loud and clear.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say, real proud of the teamwork, uh, it's been phenomenal. Uh, I also echo about Scott, known him for so many years, and he's the right man, uh, to have in there to represent the county and the details. Uh, but the different, um, you know, Wakefield Beasley and Turner, CPS, y'all teamed up great. You sat around the conference table last week and y'all really spelled things out, let us ask numerous, numerous questions. Uh, I've seen two dates, uh, one December of nineteen and one, I think, June of twenty twenty. I, I liked the first one better.
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's your twenty twenty, it, it's, we'll, uh, we've always had, we set the original budget CPS did, and we felt like eighteen months was the right number to get this thing built. Uh, so we went out for RFPs, Turner came in and they felt like that was the right number too. We did Douglas County in twenty-one, and as people know, time is money, if we can get it done in eighteen months, it's cheaper than nineteen months. So, um, it's eighteen-month construction period, it's always been the same. Whether project completion, what, uh, you'll have substantial completion in October, November, which means you'll have, uh, use of the building as intended, so.
And I'd just like to say one more thing, just for the public. If we, if we were just to waste the dirt, then we get rid of the trees. And, uh, so it's not just about the trees, although those are very important, but it's about what we look like when we're done. And when we have those trees that have been out there forever, that's gonna help the look of our site, our building, our landscaping. Uh, it's just, it's, it's gonna make the whole campus look good. So I just, that's what it's about, that's what it's about, and it allows us to have the rest of that property to be able to use future down the road, uh, when, when the citizens need it for something else. So, thank you so much.
Other comments?
I was gonna say something, but not now. It's all been cut. Thank you, and that, uh, the meeting we had the other day was very informative, and I appreciate all of you.
Mr. Collins gonna come up?
Do you, if you'd like, and maybe he can, uh, address how the local participation was arrived at and what they've done. I think, I think that's important for the citizens.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning.
Appreciate this opportunity to talk. Um, I guess going back six, seven months ago, we got with Stacy Hamby at the Paulding Chamber of Commerce and set up a series of these community outreach, where we'd go to, you know, we had them at the senior center, had our team, uh, kinda give an overview as we started, you know, Wakefield Beasley started to develop the design, sharing with the community, hey, here's how you get engaged, you know, from a pre-qualification. Here's kinda the scope of work as it evolved, some of the trades we're looking for. As well as what we wanna do is engage some of the local, uh, residents to, if they're looking for work and looking to get any construction, hey, come talk to us, talk to some of our subcontractors, so. That's kinda, kinda what we've been doing. Um, we've been, uh, fairly successful, I'd say very successful. We got Metromont with the precast, uh, great contractor, right around the corner. Uh, and, uh, so, we appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity, and, uh, if you have any questions for me, I, I'd like to stay brief.
You also, um, purchase materials, like from our local Home Depot or other material suppliers?
We will. Uh, any, there's tool rentals, materials, you know, materials that are local, like, uh, cement and concrete, or cement rebar, stuff like that, uh, are, are really more regionally sourced. But if there's an opportunity, um, we're gonna stay as local with everything possible we can. You know, and the settings that, uh, Eric was showing earlier is, you know, that's kinda, that's where we're trending right now for prime tier, which is the, the initial subcontractor. Those subcontractors will sometimes have sub-tiers or somebody that specializes in a portion of the work they're doing. So we haven't been able to count for that yet, so that, that should help, uh, improve that number.
Other questions?
I just forgot to thank Tabitha. Tabitha, you kinda made that meeting happen this morning, so thank you for that.
Bruce Coyle's in the back, he's done a great job. Thanks, sir. Wakefield Beasley wanna say anything? Okay, we're good then. Thank y'all for being here, and, uh, we, we look forward to, monthly updates?
Yes, sir.
Eric, you gonna be here tonight?
Um, I can be, if, if you needed to meet, to be at that meeting.
Never know.
Okay. Would you, would you like me at the meeting this evening?
Well, just, I just, in case something comes up, a lot of times when we have this meeting, we have citizens that may call us throughout the day. We're streaming this live, we, and so if something comes up, just, uh, it would be good.
Okay.
You can hang out in Paulding County today.
I'll be here. Thank you.
Great report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the conclusion of regular business. We do have need for executive session. Um, we also have someone who signed up for public participation for non-agend items. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we hear Nancy Hollingshead before we go into executive session.
Sir, second?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Poundell, a second by Commissioner Collette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's five oh, and Ms. Hollingshead, thank you for being here, and she's gonna speak on, uh, on the, uh, election process.
Uh, thanks, guys. Uh, this is my fourth or fifth time to talk after a, an election. I always get on the agenda, cause I never know what might pop up. Uh, this year, uh, I will say, uh, as always, our election group, our department, she couldn't get anything better than, than, uh, Deidre and Lacey and all that group. They, from the minute we qualified people to, uh, choose to not counting, uh, they worked their tails off, and they're someone that we should be very proud of. We did have some new polling places this time, and there are some issues at all of them, but, you know, that always happens. Uh, and, you know, parking and school buses and that kinda stuff is, uh, deter, uh, at Shelton, one of the problems, uh, somebody brought to my attention is the parking for the seniors and the handicap, and it was just too far from the polling places. They had, some of the actual candidates were helping them get in there because they couldn't walk. So those are things we need to address, but, you know, that's what happens when you move to new places. But basically, um, what I wanted to talk about this time is, uh, the tone of this election. Uh, I've seen, I mean, I've been doing this for thirty years, uh, politics, and I've seen some really bad elections, especially maybe just one particular, uh, campaign. But it seemed like this primary, it was every campaign. Uh, I have people, I mean, I'm on the state board of, uh, the Republican Party. I had people call me from other counties going, what the heck is going on in Paulding County? It is nasty, and it was nasty. And that's beyond, that's below the standards of this, us citizens here in Paulding County, uh, come to respect. We are good, strong, country people, uh, who love each other, we've always been neighbors, we've grown up together, and most of us out here call ourselves Christians. grown up together, and most of us out here call ourselves Christians. But the vicious attacks on people, I talk about, I'm talking about every, every side, I saw it from every side. The vicious attacks, but especially on sitting servants, these commissioners was uncalled for. It was not about winning these elections, it was about destroying these events. That goes beyond what politics is all about. I am a strong Christian, and I listen to God's word a lot. And one of the things he says is, do not bear false witness. And what is false witness? It's lying, it's deciding to deceive a neighbor, it's speaking unjustly to, about a neighbor, to the prejudice of reputation. In other words, when you start bearing false witness, you're trying to destroy their reputation, and that's not godly at all. We are Christians first, we do everything else, an airport, a reservoir, a job, nothing matters but what our witness says. And our Christian witness says, we, we are always a Christian. I had a friend once who says, why doesn't the church get out of politics? And I said, well, let me tell you, if the church was out of politics, we would still have slavery, because it was the church that first recognized that slavery was bad. So the church is not going anywhere, Christians aren't going anywhere, you know, the local party even got attacked, so this was a bad one, we need to stop this now, we have runoffs coming. Everybody supports your candidate, but don't beat everybody up. I can tell you one thing, Lydia Hallmark and I are best friends, when we came, or very close friends, when we came to this presidential election last, she supported, supported one candidate, and I supported another, and we went at each other about our candidate. But when all came said and done, we are friends again. In fact, we're going to go have lunch together today. So everybody, get to the point, if you support your candidate, support it to the fact that when this is all over with, you can go have lunch with whoever you support. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking out, Ms. Hollingshed, and I would, since we have Deidre Holden, our Director of Elections and Supervisor, if you'd like to comment on anything from the experience this past week?
I'll say one word about Deidre before, before we let her get up there. I'd say, I'll be nice, I'll be nice. No, I, I, for those of you who aren't aware, Deidre and her team interface with the public, and they interface with the candidates, and they interface with the elected officials, and that's a whole lot of interfacing in a very stressful kind, time of year, and they do a fabulous job, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you. First of all, thank you Board of Commissioners for letting me serve. Thank you Frank Baker and Scott Green, because you have supported me through this, and I know it's not been an easy job, because I can be difficult sometimes. But, you know, Frank came down Monday, and he said, look, whatever you need, I'm here. And he, he was, he was there until midnight with me and Scott, and several of you were, so that is very much appreciated, knowing that we have that support, because that's what it's all about. We all are on the same team, and we all work for the same purpose. I, I do agree with what Ms. Nancy said. When you move polling locations, it, it creates chaos, and we were prepared for that. You know, the public, as far as the public goes, they were awesome. I think that they knew, you know, there were, there's always some that don't know where they need to go, but we tried to assist them in that. I think, you know, if we're all being honest here, the thing that I had to deal with on Election Day that I did not care to deal with was the sign issue. And I just wanted to, to come up here and say, as a Board of Elections, we have nothing to do with campaign signs. If those signs come inside of our one hundred and fifty-foot no campaign zone, then it becomes an issue for us. We didn't have that issue. The other thing I would like to say is, and, and this is what I told people who were calling me all day Tuesday, we have a sign ordinance, and our marshals enforce that, and they do that very well. And that's who the public should contact. If it becomes a vandalism or theft issue, that needs to be directed to the sheriff's I wanted to bring things here this morning because, you know, that was such an issue. I have copies that'll be back in the back of definitions of what our ordinances are, of what our state law that directs us. I know that we had issues with people being upset because they could not put signs in the park before six AM on, on Tuesday, and that they needed to be up when the polls close. That is a state law. Actually, on government property, you're not supposed to put a campaign sign unless there's permission given. So those are things that we need to think about in the future. There's more important things to me, as an Elections Director, to deal with on Election Day than signs, and it wasn't you guys, it wasn't the candidates, it was the public. So I wanted some clarification to be given on that, of who needs to be contacted, because we are going into a runoff election. Another thing is, you know, going back to the polling location changes, we are aware of those situations, we are working on a plan to get those corrected. What I want people to understand is, most every election, there's no schooling session. Unfortunately, a May primary, the, the school board is not going to call the, the last week of school, they're not going to, to call school off on that primary day. That is something we're working on, and we will work through that. But all in all, we had a very successful election, things went the way that they should have gone. I have a wonderful staff, I have a wonderful board, there's departments in this county that helps get us through this, and that's what it's about. And, you know, there again, our office is always open, we are open for suggestions, we, we are open for comments, and we want to work to make this process to be the very best it can be. So with that being said, you know, if y'all have any questions, please let me know, any comments, because, guys, we, we've gotten through another election, and we're turning around right now, my office is working diligently, because we're going to be right back into a runoff within the next couple of weeks, and the process is still the same. When I'm up here, I always want to be able to say, we have a hundred and five thousand voters, and it's very sad when we have a fifteen percent turnout. You know, we, we need people to vote, and that's what's important, so. That's all I got to say. If you have anything to ask me, please let me know.
Thanks so much, Deidre.
Thank you, Deidre.
Tough, tough job. That's the conclusion now of all our business, and we do have the requirement to go into executive session for personnel and real estate. Would anyone like to make a motion that we do that?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and real estate.
Motion by Commissioner Poundell is our second.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Davis, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's five oh, we're adjourned for executive session.